All right, go ahead.
Hey Scott, I'll be right over to start us on the workshop for the legislative agendas.
You're muted Scott.
Thank you Mayor. Tonight's workshop is February 9th, 2021, City Council Workshop on the Legislative Priorities for River Falls. The presentation was assembled by the Assistant to the City Administrator, Brand Johnson, and he's available to kind of co- co-present today. We, I don't recall, I guess we could look, look it up, I think we started probably in 2018 or 19 with asking the council to meet once a once a year to talk about the legislative priorities. Given that state's biennial budget process, every other year is of, of most interest if we're making funding requests or looking for legislative changes, they, they're more, tend to be more active in the budget years. So tonight, we're gonna go through a background in history, provide information on our state representatives and federal representatives, talk about why we would establish priorities and then talk about the draft legislative priorities which then are can be discussed by the council and then they will be put on a future. Then there would be a resolution passed at a council, a regular council meeting to, to approve them. And then, so let's go to, we're gonna pull up the slideshow, Brand, if you'd like to do that.
Yep, I can do that. So can everyone see it?
Yep, it's perfect. Okay, so you can skip to slide three there, Brand. So legislature convened on January 4th for the start of their legislative session. That's when they swear in the new legislators and kind of get started. The state works on, and I'm, you know, don't intend to be a history professor necessarily, so I, you know, I'll, I'll be talking broad generalizations about the state legislature tonight. But they, they will run generally from January through May, at least that's the intention of what is theoretically a citizen legislature, so not there, Wisconsin is not considered a full-time legislative body. It's part-time, much like the city council operates where they have other, other gainful employment typically, and so they come into session just to get their business done and then essentially go home. The, there's kind of one to two weeks a month where they call floor periods or in session, you might hear people say. And that's set up by the leaders in each of the legislative bran- or not branches, each of the legislative houses. The senate and the assembly in the case of Wisconsin Legislature. And so they've kind of got a schedule set up. Brand, you want to skip to the slide four, or go to slide four? So any bill that appropriates money or provides for revenue or relates to taxation is referred to the Joint Committee on Finance that is viewed typically as the most powerful group, subgroup of legislature, legislators. It's based on which party controls each of the house or on the assembly in the senate. In this case, the senate and the assembly both are majority Republicans, so therefore 12 of the committee members are Republicans and four are Democrats. There's two two Democratic senators and two Democratic assembly persons and then I believe it's six of each for assembly and senate for Republicans. We'll get to that later. I think there's a slide later here that's exactly who's on this committee. The executive budget is introduced by, and referred, introduced by the governor and then referred to the joint committee. So in Wisconsin, the governor kind of puts the budget together and, and then presents it to the Joint Committee on Finance. Then they work through it and then it's sent to Assembly Committee and Senate Committee. So if you want to go back one slide, it's, it's kind of like the, the bill becomes a law one, Brand.
Okay, sorry.
So, I mean, you've all seen this, those of you who grew up on Schoolhouse Rock have kind of seen the, I'm just a bill on Capitol Hill. Wisconsin is very similar, but it's a little nuanced with the Joint Finance Committee, but there is in our presentation, and then we'll make this available on, on the website too. There, there is a little bit of difference in Wisconsin. Essentially, the Joint Finance Committee and the governor haggle a bit, and then the governor has a pretty strong veto in Wisconsin, one of the strongest in, in the country. And so there's a bunch of other things we're not covering tonight, which is like bill language drafting where they're, they're trying to make sure the governor can't change words and sentences to make new, new meanings, but we won't, we won't get too much into that, but there's lots of case law related to that in Wisconsin specifically for the governor's veto. But essentially, you need to get the governor and the Joint Finance Committee to agree on something if you want them to give you money for it. So we can go to the next slide. Next slide there, Brand. And then this is the Joint Committee on Finance. So these are important folks in the legislature as it relates to spending. We happen to have Representative Zimmerman from, our Assembly Representative is on the Joint Finance. This would be his second consecutive term on that committee. I would note that Senator Bernier out of Chippewa Falls, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, is also on the committee. So kind of our, in our neighborhood, we have two folks to work with potentially. We can go to the next slide. Our US Representatives, or I'm sorry, state delegation. Their committee assignments, and then we'll go to the federal delegation for Representatives. River Falls is uniquely, I'm not sure how many communities of 15,000 have two US Representatives. There probably is others like us, but I'm not sure. The list has definitely got to be small. So a portion of the city of River Falls is covered by the seventh and the majority is in the third. And there's their committee assignments. And you can go back one, Brand, to the committee, to the, so in this case, the I don't know that Representative Tiffany has been given any chairmanships. I, I don't suspect he has given that. He's a junior member of, of the Congress, but the Republicans have a majority in let's see, I'm not, they do not. Majority in the House right now, Brand.
Democrats.
Democrats. So I'm not sure, and you didn't, in your research, you didn't find out any chairmanships for Congressman Kind, did you?
No, they didn't, he didn't have any.
Okay. And then we'll go on to Senator. And so there's a joint, some kind of joint rules resolution right now for control or appointment of committees, and I, I admit I have not researched that significantly, but I understand the committees are going to be, all be chaired by Democrats if I, if I understood that right, correct, Brand?
Yes, it is.
And here again, I'm not sure we've learned of any chairmanships, chairpersonships yet for Senator Baldwin, although she generally could be in line for some special things if they're, if they come up. But she, she's probably not senior on any of the committees. Okay, and then, and we're gonna go through this pretty quickly. I'm sorry, I just want to get to the local, local legislative priorities, but I wanted to do that. So purpose of legislative priorities is so that we speak with one voice, kind of working from the bottom. It helps the staff understand the priorities of the council, and when I say council, I mean the council as a whole. Certainly each individual council member is free to have their, their legislative priorities. There's nothing that prevents a council person or the mayor, in particular the mayor, from speaking directly to legislators and telling them what you think is important and what they should or shouldn't do as it relates to impacts on the city. We do want to, with some, some efficiency though, try to help the legislators understand where there's consensus by the council as a whole on things that we think will improve the lives of people in River Falls as it relates to what they can influence. Particularly things that impact the operations of local government. So that's typically where the River Falls City Council is focused, although you certainly have the ability to, to go wider and farther than that if you, if there, you want to choose to support measures that, that talk about global policy or other things, councils have the ability to do that, but typically we have not. It does allow, I don't have to register, and I don't believe Brand does, but certainly a person that is considered a city official in Wisconsin is not subject to registering as a lobbyist. We're able to speak on behalf of the city. And we can do that even if the council doesn't provide, you know, direction. We just think it makes sense that if we're going to speak on behalf of the city, that the council has provided us that direction about what they want us to proactively engage with the legislators on. Larger cities in Wisconsin have been doing this for a long time. They have a list every year and they go and they, and many of them even have lobbyists. So I know Madison, Milwaukee have historically had staff lobbyists that specifically their goal is to go to both DC and Madison to lobby for things of interest. River Falls is not either employed lobbyists or or hired, that I'm, that I can recall hired lobbying firms on specific issues. I'm going to the next slide, Brand. So we use, we use these as a guide when we're talking with them. It's, it is important to legislators that we are speaking with a voice, so they, they do. It does help us get some traction when we can say, here's the resolution passed by the council, here's the legislative priorities. Again, it's, it's very powerful when the mayor does that too. I mean, the mayor can kind of be our spokesperson and the legislators certainly listen. It, it is, in particular, the federal representatives. Mayors have a kind of heightened voice historically, but we do like to give the city council a chance to kind of weigh in. You know, the next slide, Brand. So let's go through our draft policies pretty rapidly. If you have questions as to, to what we're specifically talking about, we can elaborate. Otherwise, if, if the council will allow, we'll run through these pretty quickly and the category, categories. And then we can have some discussion about what, what direction the council like provides staff. So we have one category called legislative polity, policy. These are somewhat big picture legislative policies, so they may not have a particular bill attached to them at this point, but it's something that the council has said we should focus our efforts into trying to get some headway. Meaning something, some progress. In particular, legislative improvements to the emergency detention process whereby the city of River Falls and other law enforcement agencies in the state and health systems are currently transporting nearly 100% of all emergency detentions that require such help to Winnebago and Oshkosh. There's obviously concerns about logistics and taking people away from their families and a number of other things. And Chief Young has been appointed to the task force on that. There's currently legislation to be proposed to put money and resources of the state into getting beds created in Eau Claire. And so that's a legislative policy priority for the city. And then the city has historically wanted to emphasize that we think we should get a bigger share of gas tax money. That local roads are important and that gas tax money for local roads is something that we should think about, trying to increase. Next slide there, Brand. Then there's things that we consider more technical in nature where they may be, they actually need a bill probably drafted if they haven't already been drafted specifically. This is something Brand would work with staff of the legislators to try to, to either find an old bill that, that meets the purpose or draft a specific technical change in the, either the a bill, a state statute type modification, or in some cases, an administrative code. So Department of Revenue, Department of Administration, Department of Transportation, Department of Natural Resources, all have administrative codes that they operate under the, that provide clarity of the statutes. Sometimes there's something we'd like to get clarified. So briefly, three technical clarifications that we're looking for in this that would be related primarily to statutory language is there, there was a bill last year that was passed for, to allow cities like River Falls to do multi-year biennial budgeting. Unfortunately, the legislature said it would be levies in even number of years, which is opposite of what River Falls does. In River Falls, we do it in years where there's a new incoming mayor, the thought being that a new incoming mayor should have influence on a two-year budget for the city. And so we're able to still do it under our home room, home rule powers, although it requires us to levy separately each year. In order to do that, this bill actually allows cities that do an even number of years to levy for two years, two consecutive years. And then allow for financing of 10 plus years. Right now, state legislature in most cases requires a referendum for financing issues greater than 10, 10 years, so 11 year plus basically. We think it makes sense fiscally that cities be able to borrow according to the asset life. So either 15 or 20 year bonding for some, some things like wastewater plants or city halls where right now most cities rely on a 10-year financing. Then they refinance that and say year seven for another 10 years, so they end up with a 17-year issue. But there's a lot more cost and trouble involved with that. And then lastly, on the technical changes, kind of big sweeping ones that we talked about was allow sharing between tax increment districts that are in different counties. So there's about seven or eight of us communities in Wisconsin that have two different counties. In the case of Appleton, I think they have three, but right now you can share between tax increment districts, but only if they have the identical underlying taxing jurisdictions, so that excludes us sharing increment from say Sterling Ponds with a downtown tid. There may be, there may be reasons to do so. We're, we're proposing, and this has been proposed in the past in the legislature, that if both, all the underlying taxing jurisdictions, so in that, that case, both counties would have to agree, it allows some sharing back and forth between tids. Fortunately, we haven't had any tids that have been in real trouble where we've needed to do it to kind of save a tid, but that was the original purpose of the sharing in statutes.
Scott, could I ask a quick question about that?
Yes.
So, and I, and I support that sharing, not restricted to counties, but doesn't, doesn't the tid have to be? I'm getting this confused now. What, what's the half mile rule? Spending outside the existing tid?
Yeah, half mile rule, it relates to the ability to spend outside of the boundary of the tid. And right now, I would need to, I would want to check. Because we didn't, we're not asking necessarily to allow the half mile boundary to overlap counties. Which I think right now, we typically can't go, we can go a half mile, but not into a different county by, by right. So this is just related to sharing. An example would be, say, Whitetail Ridge is, is winding down and it has 250,000 a year in increment that it's, it's netting. Right now, we could share that with a new tid like Man Valley or something if the Joint Review Board agreed and if the city council agreed. It takes two, two bodies to agree. But you could, even if the Joint Review Board and the city council agreed that it makes sense to share say some of Whitetail's increment with a, a down, one of the downtown tids or create a new downtown tid and share to kind of kick one off. You, you're prohibited by, by current law to do that.
Yeah, because we shared with the original River Falls Industrial Park to Whitetail. I remember we cascaded that into Whitetail, and I think Whitetail actually helped contribute to Sterling Ponds if I, if I'm not mistaken, but the tids don't have to be within a half mile of each other. That's a different, that's a different issue.
Correct. Yep, we, we have, we have shared tid four, which is Whitetail to tid five, which was Sterling, let's see. Tid four, which I believe was Whitetail to, might have been tid 10 at that point, Sterling Ponds. Correct. And again, you had to get, the city council and the Joint Review Board had to agree to that. You can't just do it. Our staff doesn't, it has to go through the public, public process to do that. You have to demonstrate a, a positive, you know, benefit for the community to do that. Okay, and then one state agency change, I think it's on the next slide, is in the Wisconsin Administrative Code or Agency Language, I guess is probably the best clarification, is the DNR Clean Water Fund does not allow regionalization grant money to go to our regional biosolids facility. So the, the Wisconsin DNR Regionalization Grant, the, one of the only regional facilities in the state of Wisconsin is not eligible for that grant money because there's language that says you have to eliminate an outfall. So essentially they, the DNR current language says they, they would want like Baldwin to roll their sewer plant into our sewer plant and eliminate an outfall in order to be eligible. That's what they, they think of in their grant funding is regionalization. We believe that regionalization is when a group of wastewater plants come together for environmental and fiscal responsible reasons. And so that's, we're gonna try to work on fixing that language. There is, there generally seems to be some level of support in DNR staff to do that. They keep holding Wisconsin, West Central Biosolids up as a model of regionalization, and we've suggested then that, that should allow us to get grant funding. If, if we're the model, then we ought to get, get the model funding. The next slide then talks about kind of our big asks. That's our, what we call our legislative funding priorities. And these are not ordered in any particular priority order right now, but West Central Biosolids Improvements, UWRF Science and Technology Building and Kenny Corridor Implementation, the, the three, three projects outlined there. We think it makes sense for the city to go on record as being in favor of direct state and/or federal support for these three projects. And so obviously UW River Falls Science and Technology is not our project. It's not something the city is building, but it, it makes a difference if other partners support it, whether or not the state will get the funding. What this allows us to do is if, if it's included in the resolution and passed by the council, then the mayor can sign letters, the city administrator can assign staff to help with, you know, analysis on traffic impacts or other things, you know, tourism impacts or things that might, might help. So allows us to support that project even though it's a UWRF project. And then same with biosolids. I mean, we're owner member of the biosolids, so any money that we get from that will be shared, you know, in, in theory, shared across the members. We, we think that that kind of project deserves some direct funding, not just the grant that we talked about, but it could be actually put into the budget bill. And then the Kenny Corridor Implementation, we, we listed three, there's many projects that are part of the Kenny Corridor that are not listed. But these are the first three that we thought were the primary priorities. This would be the actual physical removal of the dam, Powell Dam, the restoration or the basic restoration sediment sediment control for that. And then the, what we call the Downtown Stormwater Plan, which other people have historically called the Lake George Rehabilitation Plan or the Downtown Storm Sewer Interceptor Plan. That's a plan that was developed a number of years ago and, and we actually sought EPA funding and were you know, pretty close to getting some of that, and, and ultimately were not awarded those competitive dollars.
Scott, I got a question if I could.
Sure.
The River Falls, the, the University Technology and Science Building would clearly be a benefit to the community and to the, and to the surrounding areas. When we get, when they calculate the pilot that we get from, from the university annually, is it, is it based, is it based, I'm hoping on like value of of, of the land, almost like a tax assessment, but not really? Would this improve our pilot is my question?
I'm not sure it would improve our pilot. But it is based, historically, that the formula is based on the value of property that the university has. So in theory, it would increase the, the, it's called payment for municipal service.
Yeah, I'm using pilot generic, generic, generically, sorry.
It theoretically would increase the payment, although as you know, I think as the council is well aware, you know, they calculate the payment and then they set an arbitrary amount and, and that equates to 20% or something of the calculated amount that they should be paying us to support those buildings. So so adding 115 million to that is not likely to significantly, it's, it's not really a play to get more money, but I understand your point. Potentially, we could get, you know, another $5,000 or $1,000 from the state for supporting that new building.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Going back to slide 12, it talks about Powell Avenue, or it talks about support increased funding for state and local transportation systems. I think there's room for a potentially good amendment to that by adding support increased funding for state bridges and local transportation systems. So, and bridges, and I'm kind of curious what the rest of the council thinks. Because Powell Avenue Bridge, I believe is going to be very cost intensive regardless if we get Department of Transportation funds. So I think a simple amendment might actually help our city in that respect.
Yeah, I'd be interested in, in the council's reaction to that too. Brand, why don't you show the slide 16? And then we can come to that point. So these are things, just if people were wondering kind of what isn't in here, we didn't, things that we thought about, but we weren't sure that they needed to go in the list, but that would be, we'd be interested in the council's obviously the council's feedback on this, and then along with that Sean's comment about the bridge funding. We didn't, we didn't include Powell Avenue Bridge as a separate funding priority, which we probably Um, funding priority, which we probably could have. And then. We could modify that transportation to, to be more specific. The other big transportation thing we didn't include was twenty nine and FF Roundabout. And I know the council's bantered about that. We talked about it. I. You know, I, I raised the white flag, um. With that, with the DOT. So from the staff's perspective, we kind of fought the fight, but we lost and. We're not sure it makes a lot of sense to bang our head on the wall about that, but that, you know, the council certainly could say that's the priority. Go get some money from the state for that. We could try. Um, and then you see a couple of other things we didn't include. So we didn't include any broad COVID relief funding, although. Council members have talked in the past about support for nonprofits, for arts groups, for downtown businesses. You know, we, you, you could make an argument to include some specific funding for COVID related things from both the state and the federal. Our, our general thought is that the state and federal. You know, or associations are doing that lobbying on our behalf in a general sense. Energy assistance funding i- is something that's helpful. Um, there's a number of. You know, we're constantly being asked to sign letters and things related to our support for temporary assistance. Through, um, energy assistance. We kind of lumped that in the same category as COVID that. We're not sure that needs to be called out, but the council could. Um, there's a number of things that have been taken away from cities related to local zoning authority. Generally, our thought was this is not the legislature in the state to get any of those things back. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to. Put them on our legislative priorities. Cause it, it's not likely that the current. Um, majority in the legislature is gonna kind of return local zoning authority matters. Back to us, the town incorporation loophole is timed out. The temporary loophole that was provided for towns to kind of incorporate. Is, is passed. So I don't know that that's something that needs to get worried about in this current legislative round. And then the dark store loophole. You know, we haven't seen with our, you know, with Shopko and other. Shopko, I guess is our primary dark store. We haven't seen them try to take advantage of the loophole. So we, it, we have a hard time lobbying hard for that, even though it makes a lot of sense. Um, statewide. So those are things we didn't include. Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, just had a resident contact me. They say that the web. Link is not working for this meeting and that the, it's not streaming on YouTube.
Well, let's check with John and see. I've got, it shows on mine live.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just went to, uh. I just went to the.
John, can you check?
Clicked on the link on the council on the agenda for it and I get a event has passed. So we may not be open meeting compliant right now.
I can get on another computer, but, um. The screen that I set up and what it is going to is, is live.
Yeah, when I go to the, uh, the agenda notice for this and I click on the visit the web link. I pull up event status, event has passed.
So this is the youtube.com slash user slash city of River Falls.
Uh, no, the tin tiny url.com one. I haven't checked the YouTube one. And he also said that it wasn't streaming on YouTube, but I didn't check that. I just figured I'd notice.
But I, I have, I have people on both as guests. And, um. What, what I see on the webpage. Uh, I can dig around.
Let's see if I can find this on the.
Is City Hall open?
Yes, it is.
City Hall is unlocked.
The building's open and, uh, so are council chambers and it's up on the screens.
Okay.
Oh, just got a notice that he got something there. So.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Sorry.
So we highlighted things there that staff did not include, just that we thought council might have talked about in the past. Um, so. I, if I'd be interested in any feedback the council wants to provide, and if you want to start by telling us what you think you. You'd like to do with the Powell Avenue Bridge, just, just for a little context there. We believe internally. That our staff has some level of agreement with the DOT staff of slotting the Powell Avenue Bridge. Within the, every county gets us allotted so many bridge dollars within the region. And so we, we believe that there's agreement on that that's going to be slotted there in, um. Twenty-two or twenty-three for us, but we could include that as a specific legislative. Priority, um. And then we certainly could include it, a mention of bridge aid just in the, uh. The draft packet languages, as council member Downing has indicated. So I don't know what folks have thought about that, or we don't. At this point, I think, Mayor, if it's okay with you, we're just going to open up for any questions, comments, additions, subtractions. And again, we're not voting on this at the workshop or anything. We're just getting directions so we can kind of finalize the draft.
Yep, go ahead.
And, um. We were also wondering if council could rank their, uh, funding choices, priorities.
The three you have listed?
Yes, or which? In order of like one, two, three?
Yeah, and at a minimum, even if the council does, would not like to put a order on it, um. We are likely to be asked by, at least in a sarcastic way, we're likely to be asked by legislators and their staff, you know, what, what do you really want? What's your number one? If you could only get one thing, um. I'm. I'm not sure we need to prioritize them, but I think it is helpful to know that if we got into a situation at the last minute where. A legislator told us, I can get you this, I can get you one of the two, or I can get you a million dollars for either. Um, biosolids or Kenny Corridor, which one would you, would you go for? So I guess. You can either leave it up to staff to try to work on with them, or you can give us prioritization. I think we, we wouldn't mind having a prioritization from the council. Thanks, Brent, for that clarification.
Go ahead. Yep, go ahead, Dan.
Well, thank you. Um, as far as legislative policy priorities, I think the, um, improvements to the emergency detention process are absolutely, um. Should, should be top of mind. That has been a problem for years. It's, um, a threat to the health of our community. Um, it, uh, uh, takes. Law enforcement resources away from us. Um, and it's a problem, not just for us, but for the whole region. So, you know, to the extent that we can, uh, put any muscle behind that. I think that would be a, a, a good use of time.
And I, I can't see, I can only see a couple of people, so you're asked to just kind of speak up. Or yell out if you want to talk.
Would you like us, Mayor, to, we can bring the presentation down. I don't know if, do people want us to keep the presentation up or? We can just go into a discussion too.
Well, I think you, if you have to bring it back up, you always can.
Yeah, Brian, we can take it down and be on the ready.
Mr. Mayor, Hal here.
Yeah, go ahead, Hal. There you go. I can see everybody now.
Um, I'll just put a, uh, a, a plug in to prioritize the, uh. The, the removal of the Powell Dam and, and, and the restoration and the corridor plan in general, um. It's, it's a decision that we made last, uh, you know, in the, in the workshop. Just recently, um, with the, and, and all, and all of those projects I think are, are worthy. It, it's not the biggest ask of the three, um. I, I don't think we really know yet what we're going to do with the biosolids. So, you know, that's kind of still a question mark in my mind and. Um, certainly I think the. Technology and Innovation Center would be a boon for the area, but, uh, to me, the, we're on the hook, uh, so to speak, all together as a community for. Uh, for that Powell Falls and, and the rest of the corridor. And I, I think that's something we, we definitely want to. Put some effort into and, and, and having it on here, of course, will help our partners, uh. Uh, work in concert with us to, to make that happen.
Ask a related question?
Yep, go ahead, Todd.
Can someone explain to me the connection? I mean, I get, I get it to a degree, but if they send us money for the bridge. And we're trying to use it for something else or in conjunction with something else, is that gonna be an issue or, or the, are we able to? To juggle that and make it work?
Yeah, I, I would suspect that bridge money will be specifically designated because. A good chunk of the bridge money is federally derived gas tax, I believe. So. Typically the state, the reason the state has putting so much into each pot is because they're getting some. They're getting some from the state. So the pot's. A certain size and they like to keep the bridges kind of as a separate item. So we probably. From a practical standpoint though, council member, if, if, if we don't get any money for the bridge from the state. We would have to use. Likely other transportation money to do it. So to the extent that we do get bridge money, it keeps us from having to. Impact our street resurfacing budget or our seal, you know, crack filling or other things. So. I guess in a related sense, it does, it's all related, transportation funding, but. The bridge in particular, we're trying to get at a specific pot of money. That the, that's spent on bridges in the counties, um. If, if Powell, if Powell Bridge is done, that means some other bridge within St. Ray County has to wait, you know, potentially another year or something.
But wouldn't the bridge and the dam removal be connected in terms of process? Construction process?
Um, no. Bridge, that's up, up, up near, uh, that's in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the wrong one.
Yeah, let me be clear. It's the Pow- Powell, Powell Avenue Bridge.
Yep, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Marset.
So as a follow-up question, um. On the Powell Avenue Bridge, and I don't want to wander too far here. But when we sort of fought the good fight with the DOT over twenty-nine and double F. One of the things that we used to incentivize that discussion was, was the, um. The assessments that we, that we did on those properties and, and the, uh, different things that we took. And if I'm not mistaken, there's a pot of money there. I'm not going to. The number because I. Moved around. Could we use that money? In, in the transportation pool of River Falls. Elsewhere in the city of River Falls. Needed to. Specifically on transportation.
I, I, I think we got just about it. You kind of cut out at the end.
Yeah, so I, I believe the question was, can you use? Can you use the, the developer capital, um, assessments? For the Powell Bridge or, or something else? And the answer is no. Those. Those dollars are specifically re- related to a geographic location. Essentially, they were monies collected from the developer. Um, and there's outlined projects that those are eligible for that, which includes, you know, Cemetery Road and. Uh, twenty-nine and double F, Green, Greenwood Valley Drive, et cetera. So it, we don't move. We don't have a practice of moving, I, I guess we haven't checked the legality of if we could, but we don't have a practice of moving. Capital contributions from one, one development area into another.
Thank you.
Who's next? Questions about anything? Why something added, something took away?
So I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
So Scott, um, how do you feel? Do you think a simple amendment would be enough, be able enough to add, um? Uh, bridges, which would include Powell, uh, Avenue Bridge? Or do you think it would need its own separate one? Um, designation in an ask?
Yeah, I think given our good relationship with the DOT on that particular project. Meaning we see somewhat eye to eye. I think your suggestion of adding bridges to our general policy ask on transportation makes a lot of sense. I think that's very positive change that would. I think DOT staff would see that as, as non-confrontational. Uh, some, sometimes when, and so what I mean, I want to be clear about that. And we're, on your behalf, staff, your staff, city staff is establishing relationships with. State staff, DOT, DNR, um, wastewater, you name it. And so we're, we're making some. We make some policy and other asks on your behalf based on what you've given us direction on. And creating a working relationship. And I think sometimes when the council. When, when a legislative body then says, well, we don't like going through the process, so to speak, with staff and we want. To draw the specific thing. Which, which could be an impact if we kind of separately list Powell, but that's not why we didn't include Powell. I, I don't think there's a big worry here that you're going to offend DOT staff. So I. Based on what you're suggesting, I think that's a really good addition, you know, to, to clarify that bridges are important. It does give us a, a. And it gives Brandt a specific opportunity then in Crystal Raleigh, City Engineer Raleigh. The opportunity to say, hey, you know, just so you know, the council's included this in our priorities and then we can talk to legislators. We can talk to the DOT secretary. And ultimately we are making requests to the governor. You know, the, the governor has to be part of this request. So. There, there's going to be a letter from the mayor. Saying, here's what we talked about as a city. And asking the governor to support, um, that when it comes. If it's included in the legislate, legislation. Excuse me. Then. We don't want the governor to veto it. So you have to do some homework and legwork to try to make sure that even. You first get over the hurdle of getting it in the legislature, in the budget bill, in whatever. The governor can line item veto very specific items. He can go right in and take a River Falls item out if he doesn't want it. And so. We want to make sure we get buy-in for both. So. I'd say that bridge language makes a lot of sense. If the council felt really strongly that Powell Avenue Bridge should be put. Um, towards the top. You could, um. I'm not. I think it may detract from your ass though on the, on the Kenny River Corridor a little bit. So I, you might want to have, you might want to keep the spotlight on the Kenny Corridor.
Would, okay, so one quick question. Do we need to make an amendment if I wanted to, to, uh, slide twelve and just add it to the transportation, before transportation systems?
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to make any. So I should be. You, you can make amendments to provide a specific direction. But you're not taking any action and you're not, you're not working off a resolution document tonight. You're just giving councils. Direction. This is going to have to come back to you at another meeting where you, and you actually could, Sean amend the document. So I guess we'd be looking, if there's no objection. Raised by your fellow council members, I think the, adding the bridge language makes some sense.
And that would be in the multimodal transportation, long-term funding paragraph?
Correct. I think that's where we would think it makes a lot of sense to include.
I would support that.
Yep. Two. I'm, I'm, I'm guessing everybody's okay with that. Um, Mr. Plunkett, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we look at what that for legislative priorities here. I think that there are things that we put on there that very obviously will impact. The fiscal health of our municipality. And of the. Region here that we're in. I think that we're ignoring.
that we're ignoring with our legislative priorities, the biggest issue that is impacting our future as a city and a regional economy, and that is the current pandemic. I think that our legislature and our governor need to start taking action and stop ignoring this problem. And I think that we are enabling that, ignoring that problem by ignoring it as a council. That proper PPE needs to be distributed to our residents to help alleviate the pandemic and the hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, that the ongoing medical care that is unnecessary, that the people that survive are going to be incurring. I think that we are doing a disservice to our residents by not, as a elected body, looking out for the best interest. And that includes addressing the pandemic and making sure that we have proper PPE and legislation to alleviate this to the best of our ability.
Okay. Anybody else? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Mr. Plunkett, would you be looking to add a bulletin supporting language in the legislative policy priorities section around that, like the city supports legislation that would provide local communities with protective equipment and like, what kind of, what kind of paragraph are you thinking of putting in there?
Well, thank you, Mr. Watson. I think that that's an excellent idea and one of the potential ways that we could deal with this. I think that this is something that deserves coming before this body to be discussed and not ignored. And we can discuss that a little bit now, but I think potentially this is really deserving of an agenda item, something that's open for public comment, not just in our legislative priorities now, in the overall big picture. As far as addressing it in legislative priorities now, I think that you have brought forward an idea that I think would help alleviate the problem for our residents.
Hell, did that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, I'm curious to hear what other council members have to say on this topic.
Okay. So would, is everybody, would everybody be okay to put something into legislative policy about the state supporting small towns or all towns, all cities with proper equipment for citizens, something along that line? COVID stuff?
Think that we can specify in there, N95, that's a I O S H recognized standard for PPE, making those accessible to our local communities and at low or no cost to the citizens of Wisconsin.
Yeah, a couple other things, I guess, along that lines, that certainly would be, we'd be happy to try to draft some language that the council could deliberate. In regards to Councilmember Plunkett's suggestion about a separate item on the agenda, obviously that's up to the council. In the context of the legislative priorities, we probably can go pretty far. I'm guessing we'd also, Mr. Plunkett, include things like continued support for the rapid testing center through the UW. We'd include things like meeting some kind of goals for vax, vaccine, our share of the vaccine, so to speak. So I mean, there's probably some language out there that Brandt and I can find. We are, I mean, just so everybody knows, in the council, when we're talking to legislators currently, we are providing them with the crushing COVID information, and we are indicating that we, you know, we are part of the let's do our part coalition. And so we're not being obtuse about the city council's kind of unanimous support for COVID health measures and things within the community. So, but certainly legislative priorities, as we've indicated in our slide presentation, could include specific COVID-related, COVID-related language. We have advocated on behalf of the city that any federal, I know, when I talked to Representative Kine's office, I always advocate for direct distribution of funds to cities, not going through the state or counties, that we were happy to get direct allocation of funds from the federal government. And then we've done the same with the state when we talked to them, but we haven't come up with an ask or an amount or specific impacts. So in, between now and Brandt, what was this, what was the tentative schedule for bringing this back to council? The next meeting, next, not tonight, but obviously the next meeting? Or was it the first meeting in March?
Yeah, it would have been, if we were going to do it like we did in 2019, the next, so it would have been 23rd, but we need more time. We can do it first meeting in March.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know that we need more time as staff, although Brandt might want some more time. But I think, given what I've heard, we can look at some language, and then certainly if Councilmember Plunkett or Watson or others have language that they think would be key, it's fine for us to kind of have some of that ahead of time to work on. And then, full disclosure, I certainly always confer with the mayor when we're putting together some of these drafts to try to understand where he might be at, given his veto ability.
Okay, does anybody else, is everybody okay with doing something like that with the language for Scott and Brandt to look at? I'll take that as a yes. Okay, anybody else got anything when it comes to the legislative stuff?
So to clarify, we may, we are trying to collect and be more efficient about our legislative things. That doesn't mean that the staff will just ignore everything else that happens for the rest of the year. Certainly, as things become issues, we may bring those to the council for you to take action on or pass resolutions, further resolutions, but this gives us a good start out of the gate. Currently, when we're meeting with legislators, we are telling them that the council has not passed any of these and that it's all in draft form. And so the other thing we are able to give them is copies of our approved capital improvements plan, which you will also be updating this year. But we can use the current one to show them, hey, this is, the council's already made this priority to fund these projects, you know, we'd like to get some money for that. As an aside, I'm not aware of any council members at this point, nor the mayor, indicating that you would like us to hire lobbyists for these priorities. Is that a correct understanding of your current, you'd like us to do your, our best as staff, but right now, you're not looking to fund $100,000 in lobbying to try to win a couple million dollars?
Correct.
I would agree with that.
Me too.
I agree.
Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one point I'd like to make if I could.
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
In the state of Wisconsin, we have our own municipal league, and some of these broader, bigger ideas that we hear about, they do a really good job representing every city as a group, and they have their own lobbying. I just would like to take a moment to just encourage all the council members to think about the local priorities and what we're looking at here. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just show my support for what's been put together as far as legislative priorities. I think we've talked pretty good length about every one of those in this meeting, but then also in the workshop. I think definitely to push our state legislators and senators on these items is important.
Thanks, Kanye. Anybody else have anything? Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
If I could just share with the mayor, councilman with Scott, in terms of the open meeting issue, council chambers, it is and was open. It is actively streaming. We did have an issue with the YouTube streaming that has since been fixed. The meeting is streaming on YouTube. And the links on the workshop and council meeting agendas are correct if you were to type that in directly or copy and paste it. However, and I might be using the wrong wording, but however, if you click on it, where the hyperlink is actually pointed to, if you click on it, is not pointed to the right location, if you will. Again, I don't, I'm not sure, John can probably chastise me later for using the wrong language. But staff is actively trying to resolve that issue prior to 6:30.
Jason.
Okay. Very well said. Thank you.
As, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
As somebody that runs live streams weekly, I appreciate John and staff for all they do. Sometimes you just can't fix it and you've done everything right. So I appreciate you guys and the hard work you do.
Okay. So does anybody else have anything about the workshop? Well, if everybody's okay, we'll take a little break before, John, you want everybody just to stay on for the council meeting, right?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You can stop your video and mute.
Okay.
But we can just have just our names hanging out there, and I will pause recording.
Okay.
But we'll let the stream go.
Okay. Oh, thanks, Scott. Thanks, Brandt, for all your work. You did a great job on this, Brandt.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Three, two, one. There you go.
Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the February 9th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay. Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Kanye. Kanye?
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Next round of approval minutes from the January 26th Ruggler Meeting and the January 19th Joint Workshop Minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments from anyone? Christie, we have first and second on the minutes.
I have first by Morissette, a second by Downing. We'll start the voting with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next round of approval of the bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $2,867,963.63, subject to the controller's review.
Second.
First and second on the bills. Any questions or comments? Christie, we have first and a second on the bills.
A first by Beerstead, a second by Watson. Start the voting with Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, move on to public comments. John, you said somebody was at City Hall would like to talk?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you, can you, we don't have the video of City Hall.
What?
We don't have the video. Oh, there, I'm sorry, there it is.
There you go.
Sorry. Yep, he can come up and say his name and.
So I'm Matt Johnson, owner of the Garage Bikes and Brews with my wife Stephanie. I just heard from Ben Plunkett about this meeting tonight. I don't know if I should be speaking now or after you talk about it, about the 631 ordinance, what, 2021-02. There's a couple things that I've read in your notes, talk about having a Class B license. According to the, getting the brewer's permit, you cannot have a Class B license and be a brewery at the same time. That's chapter 125 sub 29 in the Wisconsin statutes. I'm caught off guard, I just pulled all this stuff up in the last hour. And we are also classified as a brewery, and in your notes, you thought we were a brew pub, but we are a brewery. We're not a brew pub. Through the federal and state, we're classified as a brewery.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything else you need from me at this time.
Matt, why don't you, yeah, why don't you, can you, will you be there for a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming, Scott, I don't know if you would know the answer to this, but all the, all the states, all the state statutes are going to override anything we have, correct? As far as licensing goes?
Yeah, the state, city can't pass a law that's in conflict with the state statute, so that rules the day. The intent of the ordinance, though, city ordinance was to provide clarification and consistency. So to the extent it doesn't, those would be, those would be of interest to staff.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Matt, I appreciate it.
You bet.
John, was there anybody else there?
No, there's no one else here.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment.
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
I had the privilege and opportunity to tour our neighbor's place recently, and I just wanted to encourage the rest of the council to visit their location at 122 West Johnson Street. If they haven't done so recently, they are excited to talk about their new expanding programs, advocacy and services they offer our community as a non-for-profit. Their main emphasis is transitional housing, but they have a lot of different services they offer. Their location has a senkit hand store for clothes and other essentials that is open to the public. They have asked the council to visit so they can be aware of their expanded services for our community. And their contact number is 715-426-9000. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to remind people that there is a primary on Tuesday, February 16th, and there is early in-person voting at City Hall, I think generally during the hours between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, although they're open until 5:00 on Friday. So feel free to come in, it's easy.
Thank you. Okay, so now I will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2021-01, amending shoreline protection regulations of the municipal code. This is the second reading of the disposition, and this would be for amending the shoreline protection regulations of the municipal code. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to talk about this? John, I'm assuming we have some people on the phone?
We have, yes, we have some people, Renslow is and Gordon Awesome.
Okay.
They, they can speak if they would like, or they don't have to.
Yep.
But they're in.
Okay.
Good evening, Gordon Awesome, 12 River Drive, Nick Township, and. And I am a real estate developer who has a contract with the Renslos to.
Out, Mr. Awesome, we can't hear you. Did we lose him, John?
Who?
Might wanna take off his video and his audio on.
Try it again.
Working very well.
There we go. Try that.
I'll move somewhere.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Pardon my bad. So I have the site under contract with the Renslos. Develop it in accordance with the master plan for the city presented Broadway District Plan last October of 19 to the city. And I know that hasn't been fully reviewed, but I thought it was a very good plan. Eric's associate put it together and we think it's.
We lost you again, Gordon. Can't, can't hear you, Gordon.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, well, I just want to say that we'd like to move forward with a proposal for this land and the settlement of the shoreland ordinance is what's necessary for that. But we would ask you to consider giving yourself flexibility on this site. It is almost entirely flat down to a 75-foot setback level. And the staff has added 100, 100-foot setback level that almost everything is gained in protection of the river corridor. Staff has done a great job and city and there's lots of different development scenarios there. And I'm hoping in considering the ordinance, you'll give yourself further flexibility. And we look forward to coming before the council in the future when that's decided. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Awesome. And Renslos, would you guys like to talk?
Yeah, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We were just hoping that you all got out to maybe visit the land before. I know a lot of you didn't before the last time. There is a lot of buildable land, you know, definitely within that 120-foot setback. What we hope that you would consider, you know, with the proper storm sewer and retention ponds and whatever needs to be, just like the downtown area, that 75 feet would be considered. And without that, you know, proper storm sewer and, you know, what the city would approve, that you would at least move it to 100 feet.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to say?
Not other than we think it's buildable land because it's so flat there and we just hope you consider what we're up against and it's just such a difference between the downtown area versus outside area, which is only blocks away and we hope you all got a chance to go out and look at it and stuff and view that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
John, was there anybody else that wanted to talk on this one, on this public hearing?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. So I will close the public hearing and we'll open up the council hearing and take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the shoreland. Trying to get back to it here. Apologize. I'm trying to get the number. Shoreland ordinance currently in front of us, ordinance number 2021-01. Sorry.
Second.
Okay, got first and second. Questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, at the previous meeting, talked quite a bit about exploring the 75-foot setback and gaining some storm water on site. And I'm talking now, I'm talking about this ordinance as it applies to all properties in the city. I know the Renslos and Mr. Awesome are interested in theirs, but I, I think we should make sure we're talking about all the properties in the city, not just a specific property. So in, in exploring that, I talked this afternoon with, with city engineer Raleigh. And we talked through the, we talked through the, the 75-foot setback with storm water. And as we were having that conversation, it became pretty clear to me that that storm water at a 75-foot setback would need to be pretty robust and more robust than what we have currently for some of our storm water situations. So I don't know that 75 feet with storm water would be practical around town in, and we can only do it inside the 100, 100, the 1982 boundary. So I think as much as I would love to see stormwater management in that site, I don't think that it's practical. I think it presents too many challenges to both the landowner and the city staff to figure that out. Having said that, I do think that the 100-foot setback is appropriate based on the DNR's direction that they feel that that's appropriate. So based on that, I would make a motion to amend the setback from 120 as proposed to 100 feet. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
I have a question for Mr. Simpson.
Yep.
Mr. Simpson, what's the state standard for shoreline setbacks?
Yeah, the state standard, I guess, related to local ordinances, is that what you're asking? So we have some minimum and maximums that we have to deal with related to this pre-1982 and post-82, but I believe and Community Development Director Peterson's on the, available also, I believe that the, the minimum we can set is 75 foot. Does that answer your question?
It does. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Anybody else have any, anything on this? Yep, Mr. Plunkett.
Just want to clarify a potential conflict of interest as we're looking at this. Property that I own appears to be covered by the existing shoreline setback and would not be covered by the new shoreline setback at the far end of that property. And I'm looking for guidance on how to approach this as far as disclosure of conflict of interest and if this is something that I should abstain on or what, what would be the proper action at that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Scott, would you just assume that if he thinks it's a conflict, he should abstain?
Well, council members always have the ability to abstain related to even the perception of conflict. But you having a property in town doesn't automatically create a conflict of interest. You know, Attorney Gerhardt could provide you an opinion, a quick opinion here at the council meeting, if you, if you'd like. The real question is, would you have some kind of financial gain specific to your property, not, generally, it's not broad categories of properties that are included. Is that correct, Attorney Gerhardt?
That's correct. So, you know, if broad categories of property were included, every time a zoning ordinance was brought up that could potentially affect your property, you have to recuse yourself. So for some potential de minimis change in value, I don't feel you need to recuse yourself, but if you felt like you wanted to use certain.
Okay.
So, did you hear that, Mr. Mr. Plunkett?
Oh, you.
The tail end of that, sorry.
Yeah, so you, essentially, the advice is that you do not have a conflict, a legal conflict of interest, unless you know of some specific thing that we don't know about your property that would, you know, somehow significantly increase the value. But just being in a broad category of properties that would be influenced by it, it doesn't present a conflict, but you always can, if you, if you prefer to avoid perception, you certainly have the ability to do that.
Thank you, Administrator Simpson, and I just appreciate that and just think that it is something that I wanted to make the public aware of.
So a reminder, Mr. Mayor, I think you've got first and a second on an amendment. You likely would want to talk about the amendment and then vote on that.
Mr. Mayor?
And you're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Dan. Sorry.
I, I was just wondering if anyone can speak to what difference an additional 25, 20 feet would or would not mean for the Kinney?
I can take a shot at that and if I need to bring another staff, I'll go ahead and do that. I believe the extra 20 feet is specifically because we have various steep slopes, you know, greater than 15 up to 25% on those tributaries and including the Kinney. So the erosion potential on those deep slopes is very high. So that additional 20 feet is there to protect those slopes. It is also a consideration to allow additional green space along the Kinney for not only, I know at the last meeting Hal talked about or council member Watson talked about green space for wildlife, but there's also the consideration of green space for the public as well. If we had that green corridor and could put in trails in the future for us to recreate as well, that would also be a consideration.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have anything on the amendment?
In the discussion, I second it. I'm always very cautious of limiting private property owners and their property rights. Obviously, there's going to be a strong balance of the environment and making sure that we're taking care of the river and the, and the eco habitat that's there. But at the same point, I think River Falls has done a really good job of ensuring and, and property owners have done a really good job of ensuring that they're taking care of the river. And I think that, you know, a balanced approach is being met here by my second and Scott's first on the 100-foot setback. This doesn't remove any other requirements that we would have as far as water runoff into the river or any other environmental protections that we have. I think we, 20 feet is a long distance when you're looking at building a house or building any kind of structures or doing anything on a property. So I think it's definitely a happy medium. I'd love to see it 75 feet. But at the same point, I'm happy with 100, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I made my, my points really last week. So, you know, I think, I think the 120 feet is appropriate. I think that, that staff did a, that staff did a good job and, and the diagrams that they presented to us and both in our packet and, and that were considered in the planning commission packet, specifically around runoff and these, you know, high rain events that we've been having and water running off of rooftops and then heading right down those slopes. You know, I, I think that's probably the main concern and, and I would echo what Mr. Morissette said. I think, I think he is correct about the the ability on these steep slopes to capture that rainwater in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a practical way when it gets above a particular, you know, a particular threshold. So in my mind, that extra 20 feet, you know, buys the river some protection and I, I'm, I'm for it. I think it's worth it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
Question for Mr. Simpson. Just to, just to recap this, that amendment would create what you'd call extra bonus stormwater drainage, correct?
That's not how I understand the amendment.
How, how, no, I mean, like, putting it at that. That's part, that, that's a side effect of it, right?
Wait, Councilmember Downing, I understand the amendment to be shortening the distance from 120 to 100 for the shoreline setback in the pre-1982 area. That would be the modification, I understand, being made. And there isn't, I understood the council member Morissette had indicated he didn't think that, you know, it was practical to include stormwater language given the state construction. Basically, the state is not allowing us to, to kind of do that on a enhanced basis in the, the post-1982 areas.
That's what I wanted. Okay, thank you, Scott. Let's clear it up for me.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so Christie, we have first and a second on the amendment to move it to 100 feet.
Yes, a first by Morissette, a second by Gagne. Do you want to go ahead and vote on the amendment, Mayor?
Yeah, let's vote on the amendment first.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Nay.
Gagne.
Yes.
Odean.
Nay.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Four to three in favor.
Okay, next we'll, was there any more discussion on the original, original ordinance? Okay, Christie, we have first and a second on the original ordinance.
A first by Morissette, a second by Watson. We'll start the vote with Mr. Gagne.
Just to point a clarification, this is the, the motion as amended.
Right, sorry.
Ordinance amended, yes.
Yep.
Mr. Gagne?
Yes.
Plunkett?
Aye.
Beerstead?
Aye.
Morissette?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Odean?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2021-2, creating chapter 17.117 breweries, brew pubs, wineries and distilleries. This is a second reading and disposition. And I know the Johnsons were there. They had talked before if they wanted to talk some more. Maybe they had some questions about some of the stuff in there, if you could maybe help them with their answers.
Hello, I'm Matt Johnson, W 10439 880th Avenue, River Falls. My wife Stephanie and I own the Garage Bikes Brews. I had a couple of questions about the ordinance that you're trying to pass or working on passing. Clarification, we are not a brew pub. We are a brewery through the state and the federal licensing. I think I read that you wanted us to have a Class B license. Well, if we're a brewery, we cannot have a Class B license. That's one of the stipulations that allows us to do what we're doing. And also, we are allowed to sell other microbreweries beer as long as it's from a Wisconsin brewery that produces less than 300,000 barrels per year. Those are three of the things that I've had concerns with, with what you're doing. So I guess that's all, if you can help clarify those, that would help me.
And Mr. Mayor, I just thought of, for protocol, you should accept the comments into the public hearing. And then you can, if there isn't any more comments from the public, you can close the public hearing. And then either the mayor or the council could certainly ask those questions and then the staff, staff can provide them. But just on a public hearing, you want, you want the petitioner, Mr. Johnson, to be able to enter his comments onto the record. And then typically, the, the mayor or the council would then ask those questions if they want those questions answered, and obviously, staff will try to, try to answer those questions, but.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question, a clarifying question of the, of Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, go ahead.
Matt, can you point to specifically where in, in the ordinance, I apologize, you must know exactly where those are at?
Yeah, I do. Hold on a second here.
Yep.
It's in the Wisconsin Brewery Statute, page twenty-two of that. It's chapter one twenty-five point two-nine. It explains all the difference, what we, the canning, can't do's of a brewery. And the, and then there's another article there. Move my page here. The difference between a brewery and a brew pub. It's some, there's some, one of the main differences is we're not serving food. A brew pub has to serve a certain percentage of food. And we don't do that at all, so, besides snacks, so we don't have a kitchen or a restaurant or anything.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. I, I called him today with some questions about this and it really helped clarify some of the issues for the scenario that I don't have a lot of understanding on. And I know it takes many, many hours to understand the law, which Mr. Johnson has had to. I think that the confusion here, as we're looking at the ordinance written, is that the city staff had thought that they were a brew pub and licensed as a brew pub and not as a brewery. And that, in our ordinance, brings into questions regarding the zoning grid that we've set up that's allowed for breweries. And that, a potential solution here that people might be interested in examining is further defining that category of nano brewery so that Mr. Johnson is assured that his business is in compliance and will continue to be in compliance with any expected activity that he's doing there with zoning and regulation.
Mr. Plunkett, might I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but might I suggest this might be better discussed
When we get to.
Once we close the public hearing and go into our.
Yes.
Yeah.
My bad, my bad, sorry.
No, I just, just think it may be more appropriate there.
Okay. Well, Mr. Johnson, thank you. We will make your comments part of the public hearing.
All right.
And we will, we will close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. And now, let's, Amy, would it be, would it be easier to try to answer some of Matt's questions? Would it be easier, what's the easiest for you guys to handle that?
Yeah.
And then we can, then we can move back to Mr. Plunkett.
Yes, so, staff has been chatting back and forth since, since they were making comment in the beginning. And so we're trying to get a handle on, on where we're at with the ordinance. We, you know, the intent of the ordinance is to keep all current businesses conforming. And it, it sounds like we were intending them to be classified as a microbrewery as the ordinance states, not as state statute comes in. And city planner, Hal, can speak to this as well. But we did notice that we don't have microbrewery in, listed in the table, which we should. So, I think there's probably an amendment to be made if council is, is okay with that this evening. And if they are okay with the intent of keeping current establishments conforming as the ordinance goes forward.
So, would, would council be more comfortable with this coming back to us? With, with said amendments and said rewriting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I, I, I would be a little more comfortable with some more input from staff and something new in front of me. So, I would move to table this, this ordinance.
Second.
Okay. So, we have first and a second on tabling. So, Amy, could you guys bring this back to us?
We need to vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yep, go ahead.
I do have a question. Is this, this isn't going to interfere with anybody's business in the meantime, though, correct?
No.
Okay, that's all I care about.
No, no. So, let's, uh, let's vote on tabling at first, and we'll come back to Ms. Peterson. Christie, the first and second on tabling ordinance. I, I can't remember the name, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dash oh-two?
Yes. First by Odean, second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. So, Amy, you guys can get together and kind of go over this?
Yes, not a problem. We'll have it back at the next meeting.
Thanks, I, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to, what do we have? We have some reports. We have our first biannual strategic plan update. This is for the, this is for the third and fourth quarters of two thousand nine hundred and twenty. Now, will, will there be any questions on this? Are we going to have, who will be giving us a little presentation on this?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have a presentation planned.
Okay.
We can provide, you know, we can answer questions. There's certainly lots of things to be proud about, but we're also, we'll also be bringing back some of that in our annual reports. So, it's up to the council. We're happy to talk about anything, including the report or wait until a future time to do so.
Okay.
At the council's preference.
Did anybody have anything on the stuff that was in the agenda about this? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Mr. Simpson, I have a question. Why isn't Paul Avenue Bridge included in this plan?
Paul Avenue Bridge was not anticipated as a strategic initiative when this, this plan was put together. So, this was, this is a two-year, two-years with of initiatives that we put together. And at the time, was not identified as a, well, it was identified in the long-term capital plan, but it was not a strategic initiative.
How would you rate it at this moment?
It, it certainly deserves to be in our new draft of strategic initiatives.
I would agree.
Administrator's report. Anybody have anything for Scott? Scott, if you have anything for anybody?
While you're thinking of any questions, I do, do want to mention that city, city hall is open and available for in-person absentee voting. That's Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, and then Friday, eight-thirty to five. This would be for the February sixteenth election. If you do want to vote absentee, you really need to get those requests in. Our clerk's office is obviously trying to get those requests timely filled at this point, but we're not doing the mail service ourselves, so we have to rely on somebody else to get that from here to you. So, at this, we will have polls open and on the sixteenth, and everyone should understand that we'll be prepared to take in-person voting as safe as manner as possible on the sixteenth. That is for the state superintendent of schools primary and the city council district three primary on the sixteenth. We're dealing with the cold weather like everybody else, trying to keep operations going. So far, so good. Keep our operators safe while keeping those operations going. And as councils are aware, we did open the Glen Park Storm Shelter open as a warming. We have had some, some utilization of that shelter. We'll continue to keep that open till about nine AM. The planned, planned to keep that temporary shelter open till about nine AM on Monday, based on what the weather forecast looks like for the rest of this week and through the weekend.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Hey, I'd just like to reach out and give a thanks to Mike Stifter and public sta, uh, water work staff. Driving by a corner of Kennedy and South Sixth Street the other day. The street looked a little brown on the edge of the road and noticed that it was a, a little wet. There is water flowing and sent a message over to Mike. And as always, Mike jumped right into action, had a city staff member out there, probably about a half an hour before the Super Bowl started. So, appreciate staff to get out there and do their hard work taking care of us. They were out there, I believe, this morning and got that repaired. And just appreciate them going out on these really cold days and making sure that we have functional water and sewer in our city. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. Scott, what do we have for availability of proper N-ninety-five masks for the poll workers who are going to be in close contact with voters on election day?
Yeah, currently, the guidance that we've received, it does not include N-ninety-five masks for poll workers. We do have a supply of N-ninety-five available for limited use with public safety. So, right now, I understand we have a public safety supply of N-ninety-fives, but I think we were getting some, maybe Jason has an update on, I'm getting, I'm getting updates. The world of technology. City clerk has reported that we do have N-ninety-five masks for poll workers now. Thank you, city clerk.
Thank you, city clerk, very much.
Okay, anybody else?
Hey, I just want to pile on. I was a little slow to the trigger just on Chris Gagne's comment. I just, you know, I need to do, to give a shout out to the water crew on that, too. Those guys, I mean, out there at ten below, fifteen below fixing a water leak, they need credit. So Greg Kaler and Ron Growth and that crew, just what an excellent job they do. And I just need to make sure that they get credit for going out there on below-zero weather, working on our water system. So, Chris, thank you for pointing that out, and I just want to make sure our crews get acknowledged for that. That's all. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everybody. Okay, next, we'll move on to some announcements. I have a couple of appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to reappoint Mike Pepin through December of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three to the bid board. I'd like to reappoint Lisa Moody through May of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four to the planning commission. And I have a new appointment of Chris Holcomb through May of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four for the planning commission. I'll take a motion.
I move approval for mayor's appointments.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Christie, we have first and a second on appointments.
First by Downing, a second by Watson. We'll start the vote with Mr. Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Plunkett. Odean.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, we will be going into closed session now for the following reasons. Delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public property, investing in public funds or conducting other specified, other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to vote, I'm sorry, to it, site redevelopment, and conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved to wit property near city count plus site. So, I need a sec, I need a first and a second on this.
Motion to enter into closed session.
Second. Okay, Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, a first by Mr. Plunkett, second by Morissette. Start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, we're closed session.
Go ahead.
Can you just? John, yeah, go ahead, John.
Uh, there's a bunch of switches and things to do, so.
You're fine, let us know.
Thank you.
Hand record, hand recording.
I see live as well.
All good, John? Okay. Okay, welcome back to open session, everybody. And I will take a motion on the resolution to disallow the claim against the city.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we disallow the claim brought in front of us from the Furman's.
Second.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't think we need any discussion. We've discussed everything. Unless somebody has something. Otherwise, Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution.
A first by Mr. Morissette, a second by Odean. We'll start the vote with Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, that's it for tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Christie, we have first and a second to adjourn.
We'll start the vote with Mr. Morissette. Watson. Plunkett.
Aye.
Gagne. Odean.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, that's it. We're done. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all the hard work, guys. Appreciate staff for everything you guys are doing.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, council. Well done.
Everybody stay warm.
Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.